Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Common Council Meeting for the City of Dellafield, August 18th, 2025, coming to order at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please. Molly.
Sure thing. Elder Person Henry?
Here.
Elder Person Schaefer?
Here.
Elder Person Valdi?
Here.
Elder Person Wilkin?
Here.
Elder Person Price?
Here.
Elder Person Laughlin?
Here.
Mayor Iker?
President. Okay, on to minutes. Item four, looking for approval from our June 16th regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve the minutes for June 16th.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, June 16th is passed. How about our special meeting from June 19th, which was a record, I think, six and a half minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of our June 19th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Favor, I mean oppose, say no. Oppo, or abstentions? I'm sorry, approving the minutes took longer than the meeting, but minutes are approved. Item 4C, minutes from July 21st, 2025.
I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or suggested changes? Dirk had the second? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, we've got minutes approved. Is there any citizens of Dellafield comments for this evening? Got a couple, we have four people here. Three, two, one, okay, seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. So, special order of business, one of the citizens is here for this. It's interview District 5 elder person applicants and appoint elder person for District 5 to take office August 19th, 2025, to fill the vacated seat by Elder Person Grimmer, who's dearly missed. He's still present, but in the city, but term ending April 20th, 2026. So, the agreement here was to appoint somebody and have a special election in spring to fulfill the rest of the term. So, we've got the appointees' application is in the packet, and if, George, wouldn't mind coming up? Come up to the desk like you're on trial and just press the wide bar on the bottom and the green light will go on, and if you wouldn't mind, introduce yourself, name an address, and just explain why you would want to sign up. So, name an address, please.
Okay, my name is George Pavan. I live at 288 Hawthorne Court in the 5th District in Dellafield here.
Go ahead and.
The floor is mine?
Yeah, it is.
All right, I guess Tim wanted me to give you all kind of a brief synopsis of my background and why I'm interested in the job. Well, I'm interested in the job first off because Tim asked me to fill the vacancy. I've been a resident here now for 26 years in the 5th District, and I've seen a lot of great things happen in this town, in this city, and if I can contribute in any way possible to helping the city continue to grow and develop and be a great place to live and raise families in, I'd be more than happy to try to contribute to that. My background is, was talked about earlier, I was born and raised on the northwest side of the city of Chicago, and consequently, I'm a Cubs fan.
They lost.
And they got their butts whipped today. I know that. But I originally, my original vocation was, I was a high school teacher for three years in the Chicago area, and the only reason I got out of that profession was if, I don't know how old everybody is here, but in the mid-1970s, when I got into that profession, we were coming out of the baby boom and the enrollments in all the schools were dropping and teaching jobs were scarce and not very secure, especially since I was a newer teacher and low on the totem pole. So, as I was starting a family, I had to seek a different profession. I ended up in the, it's a long story, I'll just tell you where I ended up. I ended up in the heavy-duty truck business. I worked for the Mack Truck Company. They had a factory branch in Chicago. I started there in sales. I worked my way through various levels, all the way up to, I was the region vice president for Mack Trucks in the central region, and got tired of the corporate life and the traveling and the, you know, constant trips to O'Hare Field. So, I had an opportunity with the dealer group here in Wisconsin to buy some equity shares into the business, and it's the Crete Group today. And at that time, we had three locations, Madison, Milwaukee, and Fond du Lac. When I retired from the company in 2018, we had seven locations across the state. So, and we had Mack Trucks, Volvo Trucks, Hino Trucks, we had all service leasing, every aspect of the heavy-duty truck business. I met Tim through the Lions Club. I've been on the Lions Board here in Dellafield. I had a stint earlier when I first moved here, and then my job became more and more involved as we were expanding our company, so I had to get off for a while, and got back on a few years ago, and I know that the Lions do a lot of good things for the community here, and a lot of former officials, city officials are on the Lions, in the Lions Club, the Dellafield Lions Club. And so, Tim approached me about this vacancy and said, asked me if I'd be interested. Now, I did have one stint many, many years ago, 50-some year ago, on the plan commission for the Village of Franklin Park, which is near O'Hare Field down in Chicago. And I won't get into all the details of how that came about, but, so I have a little bit of a knowledge of how things work in a, in this type of a city arrangement. But, so he asked me if I wanted to come on board, and like I say, I think if I can contribute in some way, I've been a longtime resident and in the 5th District, and I would like to try to participate in keeping Dellafield as a, as a good place to live and to continue to grow in a very, you know, very orderly and thought-out process. So, I don't know.
It's awesome, George.
Any questions?
I.
I tried to give you a bridged version of all that, but kind of got a little long-winded there again.
We did have a very brief conversation where it was actually at the Black Party. I'm like, hey, you're in the 5th District, we just lost an alderman. It's like, and then he mentioned Chicago politics. I'm like, we're a little different than that. So, with much hesitation, he said, well, I'll give it a try. So, knowing that it's only till spring, it's a good, I think it's a good test run to see if he likes it and if the constituents that he represents would like him. But he went through some of this fun stuff and he knows Matt, and so, anyway. Any other questions for George?
Yeah, what'd you teach?
I was, I taught social studies and I was a football and baseball coach. I have one little trivial question or fact. When I taught at this high school, I taught at, was Proviso East High School, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Chicago area, but Doc Rivers was a freshman at Proviso East.
Oh, no kidding.
When I taught there. So, and my daughter currently works for the Milwaukee Bucks, and I keep telling her, do you ever see Rivers? Do you ever see him? Well, once in a while. I said, well, ask him if he still remembers me. And, oh, Dad, you know, I don't want to do that. I go, just tell him, ask him. If he doesn't, he doesn't. But, you know, she says, well, I gotta wait for the right time to do that, so.
That's very cool.
I will. He was a pretty nice kid, I will say that. I remember him as, I tried to get him to play baseball. I knew he wouldn't play football, you know, but he was such a great basketball player that he was playing AAU basketball. He came out for two practices for baseball and that was it. He was done, so.
I'm not sure how that experience practically plays into being an elder person in Dellafield, but it's nice.
A little.
I hear you.
Little extra factor.
Any other questions for Mr. Pavan? All right, with that, looking for a motion to possibly appoint him to replace elder person Grimmer.
I move that we appoint Mr. Playman?
Pavan.
Pavan to replace Matt Grimmer.
Can you just specify the term ending date, please, in that motion, if you don't mind?
You can tell me what it is.
April 20th, 2026.
For the term ending April 20th, 2026.
I'll second.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, or abstentions? All right, George, welcome to the club.
Welcome aboard.
Molly will reach out to you and we'll figure out swearing in, and if you want that in front of the council or just over lunch or whatever, we'll figure it out.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks, George.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, item seven, consent agenda. So, we've got several items under here. Wachshau County Data Processing Services Property Taxes, which is pretty regular, and authorizing our forestry grant for Oakwood Park tree planting.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Any questions? Movements? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, consent agenda is approved. So, moving on to boards, committees, and commission reports. Licenses. Molly, we have one, and they're here.
Yep, if you guys wanted to come up here. So, we've done this a couple of times already, just a quick summary on what this is. So, this is the AB 105, which is basically the city giving Brewfinity permission to operate a temporary retail store in the city of Dellafield. Their actual licenses are through the state and the Department of Revenue, so this is just a more formal way. I used to write letters on behalf of these folks. Now, the Department of Revenue is just requiring a more formal process for this approval.
It's really close to a picnic license, and like Molly said, it's an update to Department of, what is it, Revenue?
Yes, so it's for, again, the Brewfinity is a brewery, they have specific allowances. We don't license them here. They have off-premise allowances that other alcohol licensees do not have. This is just a step in his process to operate that temporary retail.
Give us a 30-second explanation of what the event is, Your Honor. Oh, you turned it up. There you go.
So, we did this last year with Divine Redeemer.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Chad Ostrom with Brewfinity Brewing. Our location is in Oconom Walk at N 5839, 398,000 Industrial Road. We operate a brewery with the law changes that occurred about two years ago. They streamlined it a little bit to basically whenever we go for a off-site retail location, we have to go in front of the governing board, wherever that be, for approval. We meet the requirements for us to do that, but I think they just want the municipalities to understand and be informed that, you know, this is the equivalent to a picnic license, basically. But because we're governed at the state level, we need approval from the municipal body as well, and then with that approval, we take that to the state for final approval.
All right, so any questions or motion to approve the application to serve alcohol at the event on September 7th?
I'll move to approve the retail sales application by Brewfinity and Divine Redeemer.
I'll second the motion.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, or abstentions? All right, thanks. All right, thanks, have a good time.
Thank you.
All right, item eight B, planned commission. Let me bring it up. We had a few things at the planned commission, but, um, fun enough, it was mostly like approvals of, of new businesses, which is always good for the city. Just down the street, there's a, on Milwaukee Street, there's a new business, there was a big article in the paper and they got like a footnote at the end of it. There's a similar business in Pewaki. This is called Seedling Debut Ultrasound, where instead of just having a clinical environment where you get a quick scan of your baby and you get maybe like a picture you don't wanna show your grandparents, but you do anyway, um, this is like a, this is like a, a place to have a, a relaxed ultrasound and pay for it and show grandma and grandpa right there in person and meet their, it's an interesting new technology and business that's coming up, but they're gonna be down here on Milwaukee Street, right next to a place where you can buy toys and child's clothes, so perfect. And then there's another handcrafted barber lounge is on Main Street, um, Chamber of Commerce is relocated, um, there's a place near Sentry, um, Albrecht Sentry, um, called, uh, What's in the Bull Pet Shop? And I wouldn't bring this up normally, cause I think there's lots of pet shop stores, but, um, they actually have, uh, a kitchen, I believe, in, in locally, like just south of here, that's approved for like, it's cleanly enough to be approved for human consumption. So it's like all these nuts with their, their, um, fur babies. There's a place to buy really high-end food, like the commercials we've been seeing, um, but it's right here closely, um, you know, locate, located in the city. And then Callon Construction also moved in and let's see what else we have here. Blue Collar, Blue Collar Coffee is moving a little bit west. Not physically the entire thing, but they're gonna occupy the full west part of the property. As a part of that, it's been a long time in the making, but they've got a beautiful, um, river frontage that's currently occupied by a big green dumpster that's getting out of there sometime that, within the next twelve months. Um, so might get an extra parking spot and more sightly place to walk by the river. Um, and the other thing that was kind of interesting that was in the news is, um, Applebee's is IHOP slash Applebee's. So we approved the site plan. It's an interesting concept, apparently it's doing well and there's some good investors and money behind it, so we expect them to be here for a while. So, App, is that what it's called?
I'm calling it Apple.
Oh. Unofficial, don't step on the marketing people. It's whatever it is, it is. So don't take Molly's word that it's called Apple Hop. But, um, uh, the other thing is, there's been a couple of improvements that have been in the works for the Commodore. One is an enclosure for some mechanicals on the roof on the north side that dampened some noise issues and conceal some, um, HVAC equipment and some kitchen equipment. And then also formalizing a fence in the south end of the property and the, across the road on the east to prevent headlights and make it look more than the kind of pseudo snow fence that was there. So that's kind of the update from, although you could read that in the minutes, I thought I'd share it, cause there were some neat, neat things in there. Um, so that's it for the planned commission. Other than that, we've got a meeting, um, next week, Wednesday. I will not be there, but we'll see later in business. Dirk will be appointed to that position soon, hopefully, and, um, he can decide, he can wrestle with Dan Jawinski whether or not to run that meeting. Um, so pass that. Lake Welfare Committee, Elder Person Price. Anything going on in the lake?
The lake dropped quite a bit during the last twenty-four hours. I was very glad to see that. I think it's still above, you know, the flood stage or no, no wake zone, but it's getting, it's getting close, so.
No wake zone.
It was lifted?
Okay. Unofficially, not officially. Officially.
Does anybody know where that came from?
What's that?
Where the level is for the no-wake zone.
I will defer that. We're, we're gonna have a big debrief. I've got some, some reports on how the dam level went and that. Um, I'll do that under the mayor's report, but also, um, Miss, um, our city administrator and public works director, Mr. Hafner is in a, a conference in Chicago that goes over a lot of this coincidentally, um, as far as how different people manage their information sharing with the public and that. So I'll, I'll share what I know in a few minutes.
But, but the lake is still, we're, we're very relatively high and have, I think it still should be no-wake for a while, especially with the signs of those we got running around.
I was not aware there was any official, who made that call? Okay. All right, we'll talk about it in a bit.
Okay. Okay, the other thing we, we talked about, um, probably the most of the time was on, with, with the whole wa- wake surfing issue and what's going on in the state and whatever, but, uh, our committee tried to say, the best thing that we can do is trying to regulate voluntarily through education. That was our plan last year. And we were gonna watch it very closely this year to see how that education has been working. We've had signs up and stuff on the communicator and things like that. Uh, the general feel of the group was it's not that much different than it was last year. It really is not improving, especially off-lake people. Uh, one of the thoughts that was kicked around and I, any, uh, impact from this committee, I would love, love to hear what your feelings of mine might be, but the thought was maybe instead of passing any kind of ordinance to restrict people, you would just take that education level, bump it up one level and ask for permits. For those that have those kind of boats, have a permit. And the only reason why we would have a permit is then you could control that at least they would know the laws. Right now, they're probably not reading this stuff, they're ignoring it. If they, if they had a permit, at least we'd know they either had a very small class or at least had to, had to sign off that you have to do this, this and this, and you give them a packet to say, these are the rules, follow them, you know? The next level is, we're gonna have to try and, you know, put in rules. But that's so tough to administer and handle it. We much prefer to do it on a continued education process. So a permit would be kind of be forced education process. Uh, permit fee would be five or ten dollars, just to cover the cost of, of doing that, uh, not to make any money, just to cover expense. But the main reason is just trying to see if we could get people to actually get the permit and then know what the rules are. And that would be people on lake, off lake. You'd have to have a permit that stickers on the windshield of your car, and then if you didn't have the permit, any citizen couldn't, couldn't note that or any police who happen to be out there. And say, hey, you're changing the law here, you don't have a permit, boom. And then you could put a fine system in the permit. If you don't follow the rules and you have a permit, you know what the rules were, so now we'd feel much better about fighting them. So, any thoughts or feelings? I know it's not really on the agenda, maybe could put it on the agenda for next month if we can't talk about it, but.
It's enough of a topic where the report's good, but I think it's enough of a topic to understand maybe what a formal recommendation is from the Lake Welfare Committee to put it on a future agenda.
Well, we're just gonna say, we kinda get a gut feeling that the council would have any interest, we put all the work into doing it. If they're totally against it, we're not gonna waste their time.
I'm curious whether you're exclusively talking about wake boats or including personal watercrafts who also create wake.
Uh, we're talking about boats that had a balance, say, were fifty gallons or a hundred gallons or something. It's just, you know, the, the big boats with the big balance, not just the regular ski boats and those kind of things. Just the ones that are creating the real big waves. So, if there's any interest in talking any further, we'll go and put together and actually come up with a kind of a hard, fast river recommendation for the next.
I'd love to hear what Lake Welfare could come up with in terms of a permit proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think that's reasonable and that, that'd be something that would be, it'd be great if, um, that would be in conjunction with, maybe you're trailblazing, but maybe there's somebody else in, in the state that's done something similar that would be a good template to follow.
Yeah.
I think it's a wise mechanism to manage communication. And to, on an ongoing basis as well, and at least send them something.
But I think it would show that Delafield is serious about this.
Yeah.
So, okay, we'll put something together. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Um, Park and Recreation Committee, Tree Board, Alderman Schaefer.
Uh, Park and Rec and Tree Board met, uh, July. We, um, let's see, uh, the Ice Age Trail Group has generously offered some volunteer labor to do some maintenance along, uh, the trail in the Liberty Park area. We've accepted that offer and we're coordinating with DPW on, on, uh, getting that done as a team effort. We, as you heard, we, um, voted to apply again for the tree matching grant for Liberty Park. We didn't get it last year, cause there was a lot of competition, but, uh, uh, we think we got a, a good chance this year. And update on Liberty Park, we had a crowd of over five hundred for Pat McCurdy. So, um, again, our crowd size is averaging over five hundred per show. Two years ago, that was our largest show of the, the series, so we continue to, uh, we continue to grow in popularity, which is nice to see the trend. We also plan, are planning to, uh, come to the council with, uh, recommendation for continuing the series and putting some budget money together to make this happen again next year.
All right, that's it. Thanks, Mark. Um, Public Works Committee, Dirk.
Public Works Committee met on August sixth at our normal time. Um, I was out of town, so I, I missed the meeting, but a few notes. Um, the committee discussed for the second or third time, the no parking on Cedar Valley and, and made a final agreement that we would not put no parking along that street. The committee also reviewed Milwaukee Street driveway locations, right there on the corner by Garrison Court. There's, there's a, a residential development going in and, um, and the committee looked at that, approved the locations with a few, uh, conditions, so that'll move forward. They also looked at the Oak Road, Oakwood Road Path Project and, um, and I noted that that's also gonna be, uh, part of the urban forestry, uh, grant application, so I know that's coming up later in the agenda tonight. I'm sorry, that was in the, in the consent agenda.
It was.
So, so we already passed that. But, but that's about it. Uh, nothing for the, the council to consider tonight.
All right, thanks, Dirk. Um, and so Delhart, we didn't have a meeting, um, but, um, we have had an ongoing project for upgrades and, um, uh, the general manager, Rob Minima, is gonna, is, is asked for some, some of our time in the next upcoming council meeting to give an overview of the improvements that have gone on, so we'll look, look for that in a future, uh, agenda meeting and, uh, uh, meeting agenda. So anyways, so Rob will be talking to us soon and tell you what's going on in an area that you take for granted, but is very important. All right, um, Police Commission.
No meeting, no report.
All right, thanks. Um, Library Board.
Um, no meeting, no report. We, our next meeting is next Monday at six-thirty in the library program room.
All right, and the, it's, the director's report's in the packet, so, all right. All right, Zoning Board of Appeals.
No meeting, no report.
Okay. Promotional and Tourism.
We did meet, uh, last week and let me pull up my notes. We have a lot going on, as someone would, uh, not be surprised, at Delafield in the summer, on Lake Country. Um, we have our fabulous website, if you wanna check it out. Um, there is this video series that I think I've mentioned before. It focuses on places to visit, um, for history, adventure, food, shopping, you name it. My favorite one is the kayaking video. It's kind of funny. The, the guy's a little nervous, um, but it's fun. Uh, we're pairing up more and more with our chamber. Our new director is fabulous. Um, she's come up with an idea that we're exploring, um, that involves sort of an art-related scavenger hunt that would take people all over the city with clues. It would be a nice, family-friendly thing to do year-round outside, um, and we're considering ten different spots. Um, it's, it's, it's been a lot of fun to look at the possibilities, uh, but that's all it is right now. So stay tuned for that, cause it, it looks like so much fun. Uh, we're also working on our budget as the budget time is drawing near and, uh, any more details you'll find in the minutes on the city's website, but don't forget to check out, visit delafield.org. Thanks.
Thanks, Jackie. Um, all right, and Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, I do not believe there was a meeting. The Country Fire and Rescue Board, um, again, the meeting for them is on Wednesday night this week. Dear Management Committee, aside from the fact that there's a, like a eight or ten-point buck in my backyard.
Oh, my gosh.
And a, and a, yeah, his younger brother. So what's going on with that, Dirk?
Committee had a, a work day a week ago on August ninth, uh, put up the, the covers for the stands and, and finished the work, so we're, we're pretty much ready to go for the season. Um, season starts mid-September. Our next meeting is tomorrow night.
All right, great.
That's all I have.
Thanks. And other committees and reports, boards, there's none. Um, unfinished business, we're running a clean ship here, no unfinished business. So Mayor's Report, got a few things here, it's, um, except we need a motion to accept the resignation of Susan Buchanan for the alternate position on Promotional and Tourism Commission, term to expire, um, in spring. She's just super busy with other things and she's an alternate and, um, so she's, thanks for her service, but looking for, uh, motion to accept her resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or abstentions? All right, thanks. Thank you again, Susan. Um, accept resignation of Mark Spellman from the citizen member on the Dear Management Committee, term to expire in spring. This is more, um, I believe he may have been, um, appointed, accepted, and he just hasn't really been showing up, so he's, we're accepting his resignation by virtue of absence. So anybody look for a motion to accept his resignation?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or abstentions? Okay. Thanks, Mark. Um, and I'm looking to confirm the appointment of Dirk Wilken to the elder person position on the planned commission vacated by Elder Person Grimmer to expire, uh, in spring, uh, so April twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or abstentions? All right, I'll comment. Thanks, Dirk. Um, all, well, we said all those in favor. All right, motion carries. Thanks, Dirk. Um, next meeting is next week. Um, and I'll come up with a update for the employee recognition, um, later, but also in my mayor's report, I got a few things. It's, it's very much, um, well, I'll start out with the fun stuff. Summer's busy and downtown's buzzing. We're dealing with, um, traffic because of the eighty-three closure and that, and, uh, people have to, people seem to be accepting the fact that they need to be patient going through downtown. It's a little more stress than it usually is. Um, and sometimes the increased traffic actually helps slow people down, because there's some of us, people that know the rules and we're roadblocks, right? We're the slow ones and we end up with a train of people behind us. But, um, so August second, we had, um, the Hawks Inn had their, their thing. I baked a cherry pie, it went over well. I, I think I made somewhere between twenty and thirty bucks for the Hawks Inn, but they, they continue to have, um, summer fun stuff at their, like their ice cream social and ongoing art displays and sales. But along with that, there's other stuff that's going on, ongoing with the Chamber of Commerce and tourism and, um, local businesses with different sales. You saw Wheel and Sprocket this weekend. Um, and, uh, the library, um, don't underestimate the fact that they know their audience. Um, different times of the day, I'm called in here to just do mundane things like sign, um, things so that they get processed and, um, just on some random Tuesday or something, I'll see some little, um, music group or something or a splash pad or, um, there's lots of stuff to do at the library, so keep a, keep them in your mind. Um, and, uh, so tons of fun for everyone, uh, young and old. Um, but also I'll put a plug in for Liberty Park on Thursday. Got a brother who's a big fan of, uh, this Miles, Miles Wangren, um, Thursday night, and they've got Whiskey Bells and him. Super great time. So if the weather's good, even if it's not, tough it out, um, it's at Liberty Park. And then on August thirty-first, there's a Lions Club, um, car show that's all downtown. So, gonna cause a little rift in traffic, but in, you know, instead of complaining about it, don't try to drive through, just park someplace else and walk down and enjoy the show. But, so aside from that, like I said, that's the fun stuff. I'll just, I'll, I have to compliment the city. My experience as a, as a mayor is new and, um, with a, any kind of a natural disaster and, um, so going into the weekend, um, last week, so Friday, it started raining and I was like, oh, good, we need the rain. Well, that sentiment lasted about six hours, right? Um, and then different members of my family were stuck in different flooding conditions in different areas of the city, State Fair, Summer Festgrounds, other places, and realized it's pretty significant rainfall. It's one of those, I don't like the term hundred-year floods, but we haven't seen something like that in this area for a long time. Just asked friends or relatives in Waukesha, um, Wauwatosa, Brookfield. Major, major act of God and Mother Nature that created some problems for a lot of people. But I have to really go out of my way to compliment the, the communication system that's set up. One of the things that Chief Fennig told me to do right when I, he knew I was gonna be mayor and I was signed up for it, went to an emergency management system municipal leader coordinator meeting, and it's really, the emphasis of that, and I reported on this before, was, it was last spring. Told the, the city leaders, you don't know what these people do. Stay out of their way, enable them to do their jobs. And so that sounds all nice and everything, and my job is, as a, as a municipal leader is to see where I need to go beg for equipment, if I needed to offer it to other people, and that's exactly what we were in a position to do last weekend, is offer people help, because we didn't get hit like a lot of other people did. But it started with a call early Sunday morning. Tom Hafner, our city administrator, called me. Just want to update you on what's going on with the flooding, and I was, again, I was a little bit, and I knew there was some flooding in State Fair, but, uh, he indicated the lake levels, what's going on with the dam, what's going on with, DPW's up all night diverting sewer systems on different areas. At first, it sounded like we might be diverting it into culverts, but what we were doing was moving pipes from one sewer retention area to another. So we're like, this pump can't keep up. These guys were up all night moving sewer, sewage around, going from one location to another to keep things from overflowing and to the, and keeping things out of people's basements as best as they could. That was impressive to hear. I didn't, I didn't get asked in the morning for emergency help or advice, or what should we do, Mayor, this is a problem. It was, here's how we handled all the situations, including things with, with the dam. It was, this is the largest flood event we've had since 2008, the year after the dam was installed. It was just finalized in 2008 when we had that big issue, and there's some interesting data on that, and that is, uh, there was complaints by surrounding communities thinking that we weren't taking our fair share of the brunt of Mother Nature, but, uh, 2008 was a learning experience. There wasn't, anyways, the same crew that was here, including Tom, DPW, and, and staff, let the water level rise as much as we could physically handle, and this is, we're on a river. We'd love to stop the river if we could, but we sent the lake into a noake status as faster, faster than we did back in, actually faster than we did back in, in 2008. And what's going on right now with it, well, anyways, there was, there was complaints that we left, that we had the dam down 100%. We're just letting water run down and flood our neighbors. We're, everything's a fraction, but we're at 60% of the opening level that we were in 2008, which was a significantly larger event. We let the lake level get as high or about as high as it did then, and that's a, that's a, about an eighth as much as a dam could be opened. Tom will verify these numbers, so I'll just take this as a, as a guesstimate. But right now, what's going on is that, as the water continues to come down, this rain isn't good news, but it's slowly receding, but for every inch it goes down, we're raising the dam incrementally more. So we're trying to buffer as much as we can downstream. This is, this is an ongoing situation. And I'm only expressing this because of the volume of calls that Molly, Caitlin, Sarah, Tom, me, anyone with a dot DellaField.gov or whatever address did. And the big, the most significant thing is even where we're at right now, we're operating the dam as we're raising it, as levels are slightly coming down, significantly higher than what our permit even allows us to do. So, anyway, that's just some background, because you've probably heard complaints from other people or even people on our own lake. Again, it's like, it's unusual for us to have this event where we've got the water level as high as it was. But the amount of communication between people, so like I said, Tom called me early Sunday morning. By early afternoon, there was a countywide conference call with the different community leaders I was on, and it was specific to Lake Country Fire and Rescue and Matt, our Chief Fennig, as our, as our emergency response coordinator, to let us know the status of everybody, you know, who's got flooded basements, who doesn't, and that continues to evolve, but, and there's ongoing assessments. So thanks to Matt and Tom and Alex Freeman at the Waukesha County. They're maintaining this ridiculously complicated spreadsheet system to apply for reimbursement grants for people that have flooding. So if you aren't aware of that, anyone listening or people calling you, contact the county, and, but just great communication. The only thing that wasn't good communication was a website that was put up for free a while back, or volunteer, that showed lake, lake level monitoring, that gave a lot of misinformation and misperceptions to some of our, our surrounding communities that said, hey, we're water skiing, everything's fine. There was issues with the sensor because it was under stress and it's old. We need to, we're gonna see a proposal from Tom and, and our IT providers on how to improve the website, the sensor communication, other things. A lot of, it's, it's just, it's a link to our site. I didn't ask for it to come down because it's still providing intermittently good data as far as the lake level. But we're still, right now, we're about six inches over the level that the DNR allows us by permit to have the dam at. We're doing our best. You can tell how things are going. But, and again, like I said on the call, my only comment was based on how we came out relatively unscathed versus Waukesha and others. Is there any equipment we have on hand that we can offer our communities that are nearby? And we're on standby for that, never, never really needed to do so, because they're, they're in good shape. Another thing, I don't know if anyone saw the sign that went up on our website, like Cushing Park was closed, or Fort Cushing was closed. That wind shear that came out Monday morning was really unwelcome. It, it hurt a lot of people's trees in different areas. St. John's had massive trees that came down. Within 12 hours, they were cleaned up and gone by DPW, and Fort Cushing had one that was really a big oak right in the middle of the playground that was topped and hanging, and I went to check on it firsthand, and we've got some trusted contractor that subs for us that was there working. I interrupted him to just say thank you, and he's like, yeah, well, you know, these guys call me when they, they need this equipment. But he's, friend of a friend in the experience of our DPW guys saved, you know, thousands of dollars' worth of damage to Fort Cushing, so. Anyway, overall, just really impressed. These guys don't make headlines, but when you see anyone from DPW walking around, just say thanks. Let's see. Aside from that, that's, that's all I have to report, so.
Tim, if I could just make a comment on that. One thing most, maybe not all people realize is, when the dam was fixed in, in 2007, a year or two later, they finally gave us the no, no flood zone from FEMA. Because prior to that, because the dam was all screwed up, they put us back in the flood zone, which cost people lots of money, because they had to buy flood insurance for their mortgage, and they had all sorts of issues. So that got fixed, and then all of a sudden, we were back to a no flood zone area. And it was because we have a regulated dam. When people flood on the lake, because there's, we kept it higher than we could've, I think that brings the city in a potential area of, I'm not sure where we are on that, because we're not doing what we said we're doing as a non-flood zone, because we're flooding. Because a, a nice house right next to my old house on Sylvester Drive, they had four inches across their whole house in the first floor. It probably is gonna be a total. And there was, I'm sure that's not the, the only house, and if he would've had a mortgage, you know, you can't buy flood insurance if you're not in a flood zone, so we don't have a flood zone, so people can't buy flood insurance. So it's a real catch-22. So that guy could've bought, you know, if we, maybe we're better off going back to the flood zone again. Then people can at least buy flood insurance if we're gonna, you know, try and protect people downstream. Totally understand why we would, why we would do that, but it does give us, gives the city people here a potential issue.
So I'm gonna pause this discussion from going too much further.
That's my comment.
That was a, that was a report, so, yeah, so balancing into the, your comments, Paul, are the fact that there's a balance between, also, we have to look at the water being released that would impact the bridge right here in St. John's on Highway C, and the properties immediately adjacent to that and the park and Fishbones. I mean, there's, there's a balancing act that, again, this would be something that Tom, Tom could, but I'm just saying in summary that it's not a, it's not a, a linear equation. There's, there's multiple variables that go into how they manage the dam and what we're legally obliged to do and what our permit allows us to do and what's in the interest of the public safety overall, and it's just, from personal experience, the willingness of people to blame a person or an operator on something that happens that is well beyond anyone's control is understandable, but also gives people upstairs on the phones and different officials appropriately thick-skinned and good-tempered diplomatic skills, if that's okay. But, so individual issues, based on these different variables, should certainly be looked into on an individual basis.
12 inches of rain is really hard to have everything perfect all at once. I would like to point out that it's, that the statistics should be one-in-a-thousand chance of this happening. Any rainfall event is about a one-in-a-thousand, you're gonna get this huge rain event, but somehow it's come to be called one in a thousand years, but it could happen in sequence. There's your data lesson for the evening, but I think our LCFR, our DPW people have been absolutely amazing.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I treaded farther too deep into the, the data than, than I should've. As far as a, a summary report, I'll take it as your comments, Paul, and, and yours, Jackie, that I'll ask Tom for a quantitative summary of how this went, because we're still in the middle of it. I mean, it's still, we, we have warning, whatever, weather warnings for, that are on the queue still. So, anyway, but, yeah, I, take what I said as a, as kind of a venting of all the information I've been inundated with over the past week, but most of it is, my, my sharing of it is the fact that there's people that sometimes you walk in their office, it doesn't look like they're doing anything, but when something like this happens, they're working 48 hours days in six-hour shifts, so anyways. So I'll leave that at that, and thanks for the feedback, and I will ask Tom to come back with a quanti, more quantitative analysis of how the whole dam level went and what we did, could've done better, did better than we should've, et cetera.
So that'll be on the agenda for next time?
I will ask him if he can get that together for our next meeting. That'll be mid, that's only two weeks, uh, it's almost a month out, so. He'll have a good overview at least, because he lived at, I'm not taking credit for what he did, I'm just saying, I, I just got called and said, here's how we handled it, Mayor, and I was like, perfect, so. All right. So I will leave that with that. What else we have? Mayor's Report, I took too long. New Business. Discussion regarding consideration of library board request for interior drop box is requested by elder person Henry. Danielle, what do we got for us?
Yeah, I'll keep it pretty short, because I, we haven't had a library board meeting yet, so I want to talk to them about what to present to you, but I did want to bring this up just to get some feedback at how, whether or not this is something the council would be open to, but I mentioned the last time at, at our last meeting that the library drop box that's outside can't handle long weekends, I mean, really just even a weekend or long weekends, especially the holidays, so people are having to come in on their holiday weekend and pay for after-hours to come in and work. So even when they get a three-day weekend or when they get a vacation, they don't really get a vacation. So one of the things that's been brought up now is potentially doing something where they can have a bin that's with a box that would only be open at night, but it would be something where they could drop it into the atrium area, sorry, the, the breezeway area, and have something inside, so that way it can collect all weekend and nobody has to come in on their time off. So if you guys are open to that, we would, as a library board, come up with visually how it would look, and the library would be covering costs of that. That would be on the library board, but if you guys are open to that, then we'll have a more formal, something to present and approve.
Danielle, is that breezeway always open on the weekends in 20 hours?
It's closed.
So you're talking about having it open all the time?
No, it would be a, like a box, or like a, like a slot that would go in and then drop into like a bin. That would be, they would just put it in when it's closed. It would only be out when it's locked.
Okay.
I don't know why we haven't done it sooner.
Yeah.
So I guess a question I'd have is, would that just be built in like an addition? So overflow from the box would go into the foyer, or?
I think on the law...
I'm curi, I'm, I'm concerned about multiple locations. If like, oh, if this is full, then go in here, then you've got signage and people compliant with it. So, right now, are people shoving books in and it's full?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think the idea would be on a long weekend or whatever, that booktop would be just closed, and it would say you need to put it on the, on the other box, and that way just everything would go in, because it is getting overfilled, and then they're having to come and empty it, so.
Does that just be concerned if someone like just says, well, that's where it goes, and then stick it on top?
Yeah, there would be...
However that's managed?
Yeah, it would have to be managed with one or the other, so on the regular times, that would be open, but if it's a long weekend or a holiday, then that would be closed, and there would be something that says that you need to drop it on the internal one. So I, I mean, it's, it's, there's still a lot of, this was, came up at our last meeting. It was like, this is an idea, but there's still a lot more that needs to be hashed out. But before we get into the nitty-gritty, I wanted to make sure the council would be on board with that, because it would be affecting...
And Danielle, would it make sense that the drop box could become the permanent one and eliminate the other one?
The only thing about the other one is it's, it's a drive-up, so people can just lean out of their car even and, and just put it in, so I don't think that the plan would be to get rid of that one. And during the day, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be something in there during the day. So it would only be out there when, when that area is closed, when the doors are locked.
Is it an alternate choice to get a bigger box that they can drive up to?
There's sometimes having to, that's kind of the biggest box they have, and it, there's some times having to empty it twice even in a weekend.
So there's not, if we replace that with a bigger box, it wouldn't solve it?
No, I don't think that, I, I'm pretty sure that one's the biggest one that they could get, and it wouldn't be practical.
Or two side-by-sides?
We did talk about it. It, it's just, it, it wasn't a viable option for that, because it would still potentially lead to, to, too many. I mean, somebody would still have to be monitoring it to make sure it's not overflowing on those longer weekends.
Okay. Well, to answer your question, I'm in favor of whatever they need.
Okay.
And something that solves the problem is fine with me.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other discussion for this topic?
Sounds fine.
All right, item 11B, discussion possible action regarding Resolution 2025-06, amending the 2025 capital budget related to Public Works plow truck. So the, the information's in the packet, but the quick, dirty summary of this is that all this queuing up of, uh, demanding down payments to get these big, heavy equipment, maybe our future alderman, George, would know about this, with the, the Mack truck type things for plow trucks. But there's been, there's been a, delays in shipment, so we, we scheduled this out, and we were asked to put down a down payment, and now they're saying, well, if you don't pick it up by then, we've got it, you know, they fixed their supply problem, then you have to pay to store it and pay interest. And so we need it now. It'll probably increase the amount we can get for the existing plow truck we'd, we'd be selling, so. Just looking for, and because this is an official amendment to the budget, we're essentially lowering next year's capital budget and bringing it into this year, and the money's there. Needs to be a roll call vote, so I'm just looking for a motion to approve the budget amendment to accommodate the plow truck.
I move to approve the budget amendment to allow for the, the plow truck.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, see? I told you, I forget.
Elder person Henry?
Aye.
Elder person Schaefer?
Aye.
Elder person Valdi?
Aye.
Elder person Wilken?
Aye.
Elder person Price?
Aye.
Elder person Leflin?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
All right, thank you all. Okay, item 11C, common council calendar for next year. Comments or change, suggested changes or questions, approval?
I move to approve the 2026 common council calendar.
I'll second the motion.
I'll just add from a comment standpoint that it's always subject to special meetings, like we've had a couple already, so we're flexible. All right, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, or abstentions? All right, we have a calendar for next year.
All right, we have a calendar for next year. Now, most pressing order of business, actually is a big deal. When is our trick-or-treating for 2025?
It's important.
So a long time ago, I had little girls that were running around, and I was still alderman, and I kind of had the big, big, whatever, club to swing in this fight, but I've deferred since then. And I think Saturday's been working out, so I don't know. What do you think, Danielle?
It's a Friday.
So it's trick-or-treats on Friday?
I don't know, I have, I'm, I'm, I like Saturdays, but it's a, I mean, it's on Friday. I, I actually would, would say to do it on Friday, even though we usually do it on Saturday.
So you know, I got a call from the city, or the town administrator from Dellafield, Town of Dellafield, and she asked me my thoughts. I said, it looks like it's gonna be on Saturday. They do what we do, but, but looking at what other communities do, and, you know, all I can say is the, the feedback I've gotten in the past...
Can't have it November, though.
Recently, no.
Well, no, it would have to be, it would have to be the 25th if we do it on a Saturday.
Would be the first, wouldn't it? If it was the following, it was the Saturday.
Can't have it on All Saints Day.
Well, you can't do it in November.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting the feedback I've gotten, okay?
So the general local municipalities, Summit, Heartland have it on the 31st. Oconomowoc is, I didn't find a time, but in their Welcome to Oconomowoc packet, they had their residential trick-or-treats set for Saturday, October 25th. Merton is Saturday, October 25th, and that's the Village of Merton. I couldn't find the Town of Merton yet, and it sounds like the Town of Dellafield is waiting on us, we're a little bit later than normal. But I will say historically, the last, I want to say two to three years, it's been Saturday. Prior to that, when it's fallen on a weekend and not interfered with a Packer game, it's been the weekend, corresponding, on the day corresponding with Halloween. So that's just some historical information, but...
I like the Saturdays, you know, for little kids, and parents want to, need to go out with them. It might be tough on a Friday, on a working day.
All right. I can...
Someone needs to make a motion.
I'll move to hold trick-or-treat on Saturday, October 25th, 2025.
I second.
What time?
And avoid a Packer game.
What do we usually do, five to, do we usually do like five to eight or something?
I think we usually do five to eight. You have to set a time.
From 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I second.
Everybody happy?
I like Friday, but I'll go along with the group.
Any more discussion?
Is there such a thing as an I-don't-care vote?
No, yeah. Yeah, you can abstain.
I do care, but...
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor for Saturday, October 25th?
Aye.
Aye.
Reluctant aye.
Oppose, say nay. Abstentions? Okay. Trick-or-treating on Saturday, October 25th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. All right, so what else we have? Looking for approval of the voucher list.
Before we get into this, I just wanted to note a few things. So with the staff changeover, there were some payroll items and supplemental voucher items that weren't correctly reported on the main voucher cover approval sheet. So you'll notice that this month, there is some carryover from the previous months that would not normally be there, so the approval amounts are higher than normal. Those have been paid accordingly in the months that they were supposed to be paid accordingly, but just weren't on the correct report previously. So we're all caught up now. I move to approve the voucher list.
A second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, abstentions? Vouchers are approved. So report of city officials, city administrator, Tom will give us a report when he gets back from his meetings. Molly, what do you have?
So I just have a note here that we are going to be closed on the 11th and 12th of September for a training conference because the entire city hall staff, the finance officer, myself, and the admins are all going to take care of, to attend a training. The reason that we are going all as a group is because it is regarding our financial software. The training is in tracks, so there is an AP track, a utility, a payroll, a financial, the new citizen portal that we have. And if we continue to try to do the training in staggered amounts, we are falling behind on utilizing our software to its full capacity. So instead of doing it staggered, I spoke with Tom a month ago and asked him if we could all go. The training is reasonable. We are sharing a hotel to cut down on costs. We're sharing hotel rooms to cut down on costs, but I, I think it's the best way for us to tackle this and really utilize the software that we pay thousands of dollars for every year. So that's my report as far as that goes.
Sounds smart to me, Molly.
All right, thank you. 12C, city treasurer's report is in the packet. Any other requests or future agenda items? I'm like, we're looking for Tom to give us an update on the quantitative analysis of like how the water levels went and how the dams were managed. What else did I say? Was there anything else I committed to?
I have a request.
Yes.
I'm asking for a little bit of time, not a discussion or action, a request, but for the common council to just listen to and watch a short presentation from two DNR veterans, Dave Marshall and Ron Grasshaw are their names. They're gonna just talk to us about ASNRI's and why they matter. And St. John's Bay is an ASNRI. So they, Mr. Marshall did a study of the bay in the summer of 2023 documenting a species present in the bay, and they are willing and able and planning to come for free and talk to us about what they know. So it would take about maybe...
Jackie, what's an ASNRI?
Oh, we can't really, oh, it's an area of special natural resource interest or something. I got all the letters, maybe in the wrong order.
Yeah, you actually got it perfectly. It's an area of special natural resource interest, and it's important, it's important.
All right.
Don't get me started.
Well, we'll see how that fits into our schedule. Anything else? All right, well, seeing no further business, look in the packet for correspondence. The meeting is now adjourned at 8:01.